Good evening. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for September 11th, 2023. Call upon Councilmember John Marriott.
Thank you. I want to start off today, before I call, for a moment of reflection of the Pledge of Allegiance, just to reflect on today. This being September 11th, of course, we all remember September 11th, 2001. But there's also another September 11th, which was September 11th, 2022, last year, where we lost Officer Dylan Bakeoff. So if you all would please join me in a pledge, in a moment of silent reflection, while we think about these two things that have happened on 9/11. And now if you'll join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristin Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Protam Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Faray.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer. Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Mormon.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Ms. Simpson.
I would like to move to excuse Councilmember Pfeiffer from this evening's proceedings.
Motion to excuse Mr. Pfeiffer. All votes are cast. Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Ms. Faray, how do you vote?
Yes.
Well, you're consistent with the other four in chambers. That passes unanimously. Mr. Pfeiffer is an excused absence. We have the minutes of August 14th and August 21st. Any changes or corrections? Seeing no requests, they will stand approved as presented. Mr. Mormon, you have a proclamation for us tonight. And there's a lot of people in yellow jackets.
I see that. Yes, there is. Well, it is my honor to present this proclamation tonight for National Emergency Preparedness Month and ask if anyone would like to come up to the podium to receive this proclamation, please come up at this time. Whereas National Emergency Preparedness Month occurring annually in September creates an ideal opportunity for every resident of Arvada to join citizens across the United States in preparing their homes, businesses, and communities for any type of emergency, including natural, technological, and human-caused. And whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA announced the 2023 Emergency Preparedness Month theme of preparing for older adults and planning now before a disaster is the best way to improve community resiliency from disaster. And whereas we commit as a community to nondiscrimination and equitable citizen participation in planning for and responding to disasters, and when residents working together with the government take responsibility for preparing their families and their communities, the chance of survival and return to normalcy following a disaster is greatly increased. And whereas the City of Arvada partners with federal, state, local, tribal, territorial, private, nonprofit, and community agencies and organizations to educate communities on local hazards and natural disasters and how to prepare for them. And the City of Arvada is committed to the equitable disaster relief and recovery services and nondiscrimination to all communities in the event of an emergency or disaster. And whereas the City of Arvada informs residents on how to take action and receive reservices through its annual Emergency Preparedness Month campaign, and all residents of Arvada are urged to plan ahead for disasters and encourage their family and friends to do so by visiting the National Emergency Preparedness Month website at ready.gov for essential preparedness tips and information. And whereas all individuals who live or work in Arvada are urged to register for Lookout Alert so that we can all be notified in the event of emergency, keeping ourselves, our families, and our communities safe. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the City of Arvada, Colorado do hereby proclaim September 2023 as Emergency Preparedness Month and encourage the community to observe this month by preparing for emergencies before they occur, dated this 11th day of September 2023. I'll come up and present this to you.
Thank you. (applause) Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mormon, members of city council and city staff, thank you for inviting Arvada CERT to accept this proclamation. A couple of things I'd like to say first. As we, a nation, find ourselves farther and farther away in time from the tragic events of 9/11, it's important to remember and honor those who lost their lives that day. It's also important to honor and remember those who are still fighting the effects of their selfless response to rescue as many as possible. I'm sure most of the people in this room remember where they were, how they found out, and what they felt. I know I do. However, there's a new generation who never felt that fear and all the other emotions that went with it. This past weekend, Christopher Ray, Director, Federal Bureau of Investigation, said in his speech that, and I quote, "Because they learned about the attacks from history books or video recordings, they didn't see the dark smoke against the otherwise blue sky that day, or hear the consistent sirens, or touch the recovery and response efforts like many of us did in the days and weeks and months that followed. So it's hard to articulate the urgency and sense of foreboding we all felt, the concern that more attacks were imminent and could come from anywhere at any time. But even as that day recedes into the past, its impact stays with us. It profoundly shaped the way we do our jobs, the way we collaborate and communicate with partners, and the way we tackle challenges." End quote. I recently met a man who was the general counsel for the Secretary of the Army on 9/11, and he shared with me his experience of being in the Pentagon that day. I was profoundly moved by all that happened to him and told him so. He told me that he had never shared that story with anyone until that moment at that dinner. I was honored. It took him 22 years to be able to tell his story. I would also like to honor Dylan Bakeoff, who was shot and killed in Arvada one year ago today, when someone else made the call for help and he responded. September is Disaster Preparedness Month. One way to honor all of these people and others is to be prepared for a disaster. Make a kit. Have a go-bag. Have a plan. Where are you going to go? What are you going to do? And practice. It doesn't take time. It doesn't take money, but it will save your life possibly in the end. When the disaster hits, regardless of what it may be, it's too late to plan and often too late to gather the necessary items. Think about doing it in advance. Do it tomorrow. Arvada CERT just recently graduated 20 new members of this community who are willing and trained to help in a disaster situation, bringing our team to 88 strong. We are not firefighters. We are not police officers. But we are a bridge between the general public and the professionals, and they have specific training to help. This group with the loud safety green vests, this is Arvada CERT. Thank you.[449.31][449.31](applause)
Thank you all. You fit a, you fit a very important need in our community, and we appreciate the comments and what you're doing for us in preparation of something that we hope never happens. But thank you. You're right. We've got to stay prepared. Very good. We'll move on now to public comment. I have a few people who have signed up. Public comment is an opportunity for you to bring your concerns to city council. It's not a dialogue back and forth at this point. If there's specific questions you have, our city team will get back to you. That's why we ask that you fill out the comment speaker form so that we can get that information. But we promise that we will listen to you attentively and that if there is something that requires a response back, someone will get back to you. With that, I'll call upon Judy Dane.
Hello again. I'm Judy Dane. I live in Karamar in Jefferson County. And I thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. First, congratulations on a beautiful festive weekend in Arvada. It was wonderful to be downtown at the Arch Top Guitar Festival dining, shopping, and listening to music this weekend. It was truly fabulous. Tonight, I would like to talk to you about one of the questions posed by an agency that responded to a referral on the site development plan for 5950 McIntyre, which is the Logistics Warehouse Distribution Center. Why does the Farmers High Line Canal need to be moved? The answer is, it doesn't. The referral response from Jeffco Historical Commission quotes, "The new buildings will have an adverse effect on the rural setting of the canal." And it says, "The applicant needs to consider alternatives to reduce adverse impacts to the canal, including in-place preservation and protection of the rural setting. This discussion should justify why realignment was considered as the best alternative." And it says, "The applicant needs to consider how to better preserve the historic rural landscape in the project." The referral response from Colorado Department of Wildlife says, "The cottonwood tree line that currently exists on the property is in close proximity to the Farmers High Line Canal and has been observed as a winter roost area for bald eagles, as well as other raptors." And it says, "Historically, residents have observed deer, bears, moose, and other wildlife utilizing the northern edge of this property as a corridor to access Hyatt Lake and the surrounding canals, making this the more desirable area for a potential wildlife corridor." The site development plan filed also shows a canal diversion project on the City of Arvada land, yet there are no details included in the plan. The city's land will be steeply graded, which was approved in the prior permit for the canal relocation. And we don't know if the old growth trees will be removed, but this is one of the areas where the wildlife comes through and the bald eagles roost. It's a historical and wildlife-sensitive area. The developer has provided no details on the construction or preservation of trees. The site plan cannot move forward without realigning and moving the diversion outlet orientation to the new canal. Why isn't the diversion project part of the canal relocation? The canal relocation. It's a bit of a catch-22 moment. The City of Arvada should take this moment to consider the entire project and the impact it will have on the surrounding community, especially in districts three and four. Despite the developer's stated intent, the site is designed as one of the largest trucking centers. Please take pause and consider your role in reviewing and improving the work on City of Arvada's, and when you review and approve the City of Arvada's land and allow, just look at it closely. Please understand, City of Arvada is the linchpin in allowing this entire development to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Malone.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Pat Malone, and I'm certain that every one of you has received emails and comments about the likelihood of Jefferson County approving a 500,000-square-foot warehouse distribution center in unincorporated Jeffco. Rob, I may pronounce, mispronounce his name, Smetana?
Smetana, yes.
Is that right? Arvada's manager of city planning and development has submitted a very detailed and reasonable comments to Jefferson County planning and zoning. My major area of concern is related to the truck traffic that will impact many Arvada roads. According to the application, there are to be 144 truck bays. 144. The trucks coming and going from the facility will need to travel in many directions to get to their destinations, not just south, which is not Arvada. Truckers find the path of least resistance. Every day, our neighbors see trucks now go into neighborhoods that were never intended for truck use, sometimes having to go over sidewalks because the turn is so tight. These trucks will be down 64th Avenue. They'll be on Indiana. They'll travel wherever they need to be to get to their destination. And because Jeffco has no regulation that says this LDC, logistic distribution center, cannot operate 24/7, well, there is certainly the possibility that trucks will be roaming the county, including Arvada city streets, all day and night. My ask of you is that you not dismiss Arvada residents' concerns about this proposed logistic distribution center simply because it's technically in Jeffco. Your citizens in West Arvada are very concerned. We recognize the traffic impact will cause further deterioration of our roads, not to mention the fumes and the noise that will be generated from these trucks. If you think traffic on what is mostly two lanes on Indiana won't pose a nightmare larger than what it already is, you are not paying close enough attention, and I ask that you do, that you stay on top of this proposed development, and that the city push back if Jeffco doesn't conduct a major traffic study as Mr. Smetana has requested. Please don't make the mistake of thinking this is not Arvada's concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Carmen Bay.
Good evening. My name is Carmen Bay. I reside at Lake of the Westwoods area between Broad Lake and Hyatt Lake. I would also like to piggyback on top of Pat's comments regarding the logistic distribution center at 5950 McIntyre. My concern is that currently the recommendations that Rob Smetana, apologies if I butchered that, I'd like to know what the City of Arvada's Plan B is, because it appears that the Jeffco commissioners are not listening to their constituents and are hell-bent on just approving this. So if these recommendations that Rob has stipulated in his documents are not followed, what's the Plan B? What's going to happen when all these trucks come rolling down, making noise, spewing pollution, increasing traffic, ruining the roads within Arvada city limits and Jeffco? What about the environmental impacts? So I'd like to know, what is Arvada going to do to push back on this project? Because I think it has far-reaching implications. And for Jeffco and the developer waving their hand, saying it's just a technological center, I think that they're disingenuous. They have not been forthcoming with their information, and they're just trying to cram it down. And we're all going to pay the price for that. Currently, right now, I can stand on the corner of the exit of our development and hear trucks barreling down that hill, which is 40 miles per hour, which at the stoplight at 60th immediately turns to 35 miles per hour. Nobody follows that. I've tried multiple times to cross that street. It's just an accident waiting to happen. So if Jeffco is concerned about lawsuits, think about the implications of someone getting hurt, especially now that you have a senior citizen area building being built right across the street. And they're touting the benefit of having Broad Lake right across the street so that these residents can cross McIntyre and walk around Broad Lake. You think they're going to get across that street fast enough for a truck across that blind curve? I don't think so. I can barely make it, and I have to skedaddle quickly across that intersection. Making a left turn. Most people make a left turn onto McIntyre to head to 58 and Highway 70. Again, there's been so many close calls in that intersection because people are not following the speed limit, and it's a blind curve. So I ask for the City of Arvada to consider what the Plan B is if Jeffco does not adopt the recommendations made by Rob. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ryan Clemmons.
I don't know.
Or Lynn, I'm sorry. Yes, Lynn.
I'm Lynn Clemmons, and I'm the president of the Westwood Villas HOA, which is, and I thank you for your detailed, for first referral response to Jefferson County regarding the heavy logistics center facility being proposed only seven feet from my condo community south border. I'm not sure how the process works, but I hope the City of Arvada can meet with the county on the setback issue and the major traffic study requested from Arvada. At this time, it appears the county is totally ignoring the effect of the traffic being, that may be produced by the 144 truck bays and almost 700 car parking spaces. With 45% of the trips going north, my cross street of West 63rd Avenue, of which we just heard Carmen talk, will definitely be at the level of service that is unacceptable. The intersection at 64th and McIntyre will also be affected. Will the city move to put a full traffic signal at West 63rd Avenue? If not, both the east and west side of McIntyre residents will have a difficult time getting out of their communities, because this is the only way we have in and the only way out. Without a traffic signal, it would be impossible for the new senior residents' population to visit the park at Broad Lake. Another of my concerns is the seven-foot setback as it relates to fire protection. I think the Arvada Fire District should weigh in and comment on how close the first 900-foot-long warehouse will be to the Westwood Villa condos. A seven-foot setback, or even 20 feet, will not protect the two-story condos if a full-blown warehouse fire erupts. Since we have no idea of what kind of products will be stored, Jefferson County and the Fairmont and Arvada Fire District should work together to protect my residential community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address city council on items not on our agenda tonight? And do we have anybody on Zoom for tonight? Very good. I'll close that public comment portion, move on to new business. First is our consent agenda. We just have one item tonight on the consent agenda, which is R23078, which is a resolution authorizing acceptance of an agreement regarding the intent to assure the flood routing capacity of Hidden Lake Reservoir in Adams County. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll move that R23-078 be approved.
Motion for approval. Ms. Faray, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Rest of council has chimed in as well. Have all voted yes. So that passes six to zero with Mr. Pfeiffer being an excused absence. Thank you. We have no resolutions tonight. Mr. Jones, and for the record, item C1 is being pulled from the agenda tonight, so we only have the second item for first reading.
Okay, thank you. I move that Council Bill 23-023, an ordinance vacating a parcel of right-of-way located at approximately Marshall Court in West 55th Place, City of Arvada, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado, for the Family Tree Affordable Housing Development, be approved on first reading, ordered published in full, in a public hearing set for October 2nd, 2023, at 6:15 p.m.
Okay, this is a motion for first reading on an ordinance then to be heard at a later date. All votes are cast. Mr. Jones, how do you vote on your motion?
Yes.
Ms. Faray?
Yes.
Rest of council has voted yes as well, so that passes six to zero with Mr. Pfeiffer being an excused absence. Now we'll move into our public hearing. I'll open the public hearing on the conditional use for residential development in the MXS zoning district for the Family Tree Affordable Housing Project, a 1.71-acre parcel of land located approximately at 5549 Marshall Street. And also, at the same time, we'll consider the major modifications for Family Tree Affordable Housing, a modification from the Arvada Land Development Code subsection 5-1-2-5G. Multi-family residential buildings shall provide at least 75% of the total dwelling units with at least one private outdoor yard, patio, or balcony for a 1.71-acre parcel of land approximately located at 5549 Marshall Street. Our presenter tonight is Rob Smetana. You might want to change your name, Rob, apparently there's some confusion. But before we start, I do want to thank Rob. You did an excellent job, I think, responding to the county in terms of the comments. I think it was obvious for folks to see that we did listen to what the concerns were, and I think you really represented those concerns well in your, in your response back to the county.
I appreciate that. And I also want to let you know, that was a team effort. And my name happened to be on the letter as the signer, but there was a whole team effort behind that.
Thank you. So moving on to our public hearing.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. The applicant is requesting conditional use approval, as you mentioned, to allow for the development of a four-story, 85-unit residential building that will also include office space for the supportive services staff that will help the residents. And this is on an approximately 1.7-acre property that's currently occupied by five single-family homes. The applicant is also requesting a major modification to eliminate the balconies required by the Land Development Code. To mitigate the loss of the outdoor space for individual units, the project is proposed to include 8,500 square feet of outdoor courtyard space for use by the residents, among other common areas, both inside and outside the building. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the conditional use and the major modification during their August 8th meeting. The Planning Commission also heard the street vacation at that meeting, which you will hear at a public hearing on October 2nd. We have received the signed posting, log, and mailing affidavit, and they are in order. The applicant is in attendance for presentation and questions, and we also have several planning and engineering team members here for questions as well. Thank you.
Very good. The posting, log, and mailing affidavit will be made part of the record. Anyone that wishes to testify on this tonight, if you'll raise your right hand, swear affirm the testimony you're going to give in these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Very good. You are all deemed to have been sworn in. If the applicant would like to make their presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. A pleasure to be here. I'm Scott Shields, Chief Executive Officer of Family Tree. Family Tree's mission and our purpose in this community is to partner with all people to prevent and overcome the interconnected issues of child abuse, domestic violence, and homelessness to promote safety, healing, and stability across generations. Again, that's our mission. That's our purpose. That's why we are here today. Family Tree has deep roots in this community. We started in 1976, right here in Jefferson County. And just a few years later, we purchased our first property in the City of Arvada. The subject property that we're here to talk to you about tonight has been owned by Family Tree for nearly 30 years. We purchased this property at 5549 Marshall Street in 1995. And since that time, as you heard, there have been five single-family homes there where we've housed and provided services for people experiencing homelessness. When we looked at this site and combined it with a couple of other factors, one namely the need that we're seeing in our community around the issues of homelessness. I probably don't need to share this with you all, but from 2023 to 2022, Jefferson County saw a 73% increase in homelessness and 153% increase in people experiencing unsheltered homelessness. That issue, combined with Family Tree's core belief that everyone needs a safe place to call home, really led us to look at this property and the vision to redevelopment, to redevelop it, because it is a site that is capable of much denser development potential. We believe this is going to be a significant investment into the community. It will be 85 units of permanent supportive housing that will have onsite comprehensive improvement services provided by Family Tree and other providers to work to help people achieve higher levels of success and to maintain their housing stability. We think these are all critical steps to addressing the issue of homelessness here in Jefferson County and in the City of Arvada. As you'll hear a little bit more about in a few minutes, this development was very much, took trauma-informed, innovative trauma-informed design principles into account, not only in how we're designing the project, but also in the construction. We know for a fact this will be a beautiful addition to the neighborhood and certainly an improvement on the property that Family Tree owns today. This is a little bit more about our development team, who's here with us tonight. Family Tree and Blue Line Development are the lead on this development team. Blue Line, as you can see, has been around since 2011 with the purpose of developing and sustaining affordable rental and permanent supportive housing across the Mountain West. It is this experience that led Family Tree to selecting Blue Line as our developer partner. It was really critical, we feel, to the success of this project. We also have other key partners with us here tonight. Shopworks Architecture, Jefferson Center for Mental Health, Foothills Regional Housing, the Colorado Division of Housing, Jefferson County Community Development, and the City of Arvada. We're here tonight to ask, as you've already heard, to approve two, two items, the conditional use permit and a major modification. The conditional use permit is to approve the multi-family use on this land, which will allow the development of these new affordable housing apartments in the community with the supportive housing services onsite. Again, this is located at our site on 5549- Again, this is located at our site on 5549 Marshall Street. The major modification is as a request for your approval of an exception from section 5-1-2, and I believe that should be five building design standards, paragraph G, balconies, porches, and stairways, to eliminate the requirement to provide balconies or patios for 75% of the residential units. Your approval tonight will create much-needed affordable housing within the city of Arvada. This will be 85 apartments, one- and two-bedroom units, 71-bedroom, 15-2-bedroom units for households at or below 30% of area median income. Your approval also will help us advance a very important aspect of this project, which has already received Low Income Housing Tax Credit Award through the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority in November of last year. That funding requires that we close on the property with the permit by the end of 2023, so City Council approval will also help make that happen. And as you heard and as noted in the staff report, the conditional use permit and major modification requests meet all the criteria set forth in the Arvada Land Development Code for approval. A year ago, a little over a year ago, in June of 2022, we did hold a neighborhood outreach meeting. It was held in this building. On June 2nd, we had a little over 40 community members attend that meeting. We addressed the design and the development and the programming aspects of this project at that time, and after that, we updated an FAQ or Frequently Asked Questions document that was then sent back out to all members of the community who attended that meeting, and that document has been regularly updated and posted on Family Tree's website for any updates on the project. We'll talk a little bit more about this, I think, also later on, but we know that there are concerns in the community and the neighborhood about this project. We're committed to being good neighbors and addressing those concerns, and so we have mailed and are holding a meeting on September 20th at the Colorado Gives Foundation, just across Rolston Road, to really work with the community and have what we hope can be a productive dialogue and discussion around some of those concerns about this project and how we can move forward together. And at this time, I'd like to introduce my colleague, Cassie Ratliff, Chief Impact Officer for Family Tree.
Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Cassie Ratliff. Like Scott said, I'm the Chief Impact Officer at Family Tree. I've been working with people experiencing homelessness for almost 20 years, and I'm here to talk to you about the design of the building and the services that we will be providing. And first, what I want to say is, we have heard our neighbors loud and clear. You cannot put a person experiencing homelessness into an apartment and expect things to change. We could not agree more with you. This issue, the issues that have led to people becoming homelessness and that are often then exasperated by the trauma of living on the streets, do not go away when we put a roof over someone's head. That's why you will see the intentional design of this building is, it's designed to meet those unique needs of the folks that we will be serving. This building was, like Scott mentioned, uses trauma-informed design practices. Trauma-informed design focuses on how the built environment affects the mental states of the inhabitants. So we have taken into account the trauma that people have gone through in life and designed a building intended to support them. Not only through this building, but through program, we will have case managers onsite, including mental health therapists through our partnership with Jefferson Center for Mental Health. This property will be staffed 24/7. We will have team members there at all times to address and meet the needs of the folks who are living there. What you will see through this project is that the design has, the design of this building was intentionally created to reduce opportunities for social isolation and increase opportunities for social inclusion. Studies have shown that loneliness is not only crushing, but that it does far more damage. It is linked to strokes, heart disease, dementia, inflammation, suicide, among many others. And so what you're going to see in the design of this building is that we have created very intentional spaces to reduce those spaces where people can hide out alone in their apartments, where we are encouraging engagement. And so I want to show you some of the design of the building so you can see that. So the design of these spaces cannot alone solve loneliness, but the planning of these spaces will nudge people towards interactions. On this slide, you're going to see, this is our outdoor space. There are a lot of places where we, as case managers and therapists, have opportunities to interact with the residents of this building. You'll see a lot of different seating opportunities for folks outside, including swings, community areas. We will have a walking path where you could walk hand-in-hand with your case manager and talk about the things that you need to work on to overcome and become self-sufficient. We have play areas for the families to engage with their children, and those play areas will be even more amazing for the grandparents and aunts and uncles who haven't been able to have relationships with their family members, to invite them over and watch their grandchildren We will have community garden spaces where people will learn to grow and engage in healthy eating opportunities and opportunities for that. Not only do we have a ton of beautiful outdoor spaces, we have a lot of internal spaces as well. These spaces have been designed where we can meet with the folks who are living there in fun, fun spaces, bright spaces. They're very engaging. We have large gathering spaces, small group areas, one-on-one staff meeting rooms for clients who need to have some more privacy for their interactions. These spaces, our outdoor and indoor, are intentionally designed to encourage residents to leave the isolation of their units and engage with the team members, to engage in group therapy, to engage in educational programming, to meet with their therapists and their case managers. What we know about homelessness is it's very isolating. People who are outside, sleeping alone, they don't have many relationships with family and friends, and what we know is that you have to have community to thrive. You cannot survive this world on your own, and the design of this building is really intended to change that. The hallways are large where we can interact when we see people coming out of their units and just do quick check-ins, if that's what it takes to start building relationships with people. The outdoor spaces that we have are intended to be less clinical. It is hard when you haven't had therapy or check-ins with folks to go into a clinical setting and expect to divulge everything. We have an outdoor space where you can sit and relax with somebody, build relationships, and build community, and all of this is intended to see the residents of this building, people who've experienced trauma and crisis and homelessness thrive. The evidence has shown the design of this building will help meet the needs of this community. So I want to invite up Ed. He is our architect, and he's going to talk a little bit more about the design and what we're doing.
Hi, Ed Parcell, Shopworks Architecture. Thanks, Cassie. I'm going to talk a little bit more about the major modification request, and as Cassie mentioned, in our trauma-informed design research, we've found that eliminating balconies and providing larger windows into the units are more beneficial in the end, and one of the things that the larger windows will do is help drive light into the deeper end of the unit itself. It'll also create more visual interaction with the exterior space. The other thing it does with an open kind of floor plan, it brings that light in and creates kind of a lighter and brighter unit in general, just to make it a little more comfortable. So the code requirement is 75% of the total units, which is 85, and so that would require us to have 64 units with a balcony or patio of 24 square feet minimum. That equates to about 1,500 square feet of dedicated open space for those 64 units. What we're proposing is a secured courtyard that's in the middle of the plan on the page there, and that's 8,500 square feet. And as Cassie mentioned, that's designed to have a variety of spaces for different interactions. We've also provided small urban parks, and those parks line Marshall Street and West 56th Avenue. Those parks are basically 7,000 square feet of exterior space that can be used by the public and the residents. So if we total all that up, that's about over 15,000 square feet of exterior space that we've dedicated for residential and some public use. The space that Cassie mentioned is additional 6,500 space. That's interior amenity space and supportive spaces, and those are, these are critical in creating a healthy environment for the residents and the interaction in a comfortable space, as Cassie mentioned. The new small urban parks will include tree lawns, new sidewalks that'll connect the site around Marshall and 56th. This will be a huge improvement, especially on Marshall Street. Right now, there's no sidewalk or anything on Marshall, and it's a pretty dangerous situation. So this is going to be a big upgrade in that regard. So in lieu of balconies, we've tried to add additional architectural detailing and articulation, and the first thing that we did was created a strong masonry base to the building. And this view here is of the front entry, a small urban park off of Marshall. What we tried to do in the masonry is a little bit more reminiscent of kind of the old-town historic buildings and their detailing. So we've added a lot of roll-out sills, brick banding, soldier courses, details, projections, recesses, things like that, little details that catch your eye, rather than just large expanses of a single material. The other thing we've tried to do is break down the mass of the building. So this is a four-story building, and what we've done is, we've created a variety of planes, different materials, different scales. We're using lap siding, stucco, flatlock panel, and masonry. We're in an effort just to get away from the monolithic box, right? And so what we're trying to do is provide enough articulation and movement, kind of in and out, and up and down along the building as you experience along the right-of-way, and actually all the exterior facades. The approval criteria, as mentioned, we meet or we're consistent with the MXS Zone District. We align with the character guidelines, purpose, and intent expressed in the Land Use Code. This image shows our site plan in the context of the neighborhood, and one thing that you'll notice is that to the east is light industrial and commercial, to the west is residential. We feel our project is a transition between those two things, from commercial to residential as it moves towards Old Town. Due to the low-income nature of this project, traffic produced by this development will have a little impact on the existing infrastructure. Based on our traffic impact study, less than 10% of the residents at 30% AMI will own vehicles. We've provided for our 85 units 84 cars, so even with staff, service providers, and residents, we're going to be well overparked in this case. This modification addresses a unique situation, and as Cassie and Scott mentioned, residents transitioning out of homelessness need unique design and care. This application creates no adverse effects. It provides benefits to the community, serving vulnerable population, creating small urban parks along underdeveloped right-of-way. Site location and the Arvada Count Plan. Multifamily affordable housing furthers what's set forth in the Count Plan and future land use, recommending of high residential, high-density residential. This high-density residential should be near commercial services or other non-residential services. These developments are generally located along collectors and arterials, streets, and should be near transit centers and services. You can see our site is on the right. It's the little red bubble, and as you go to the west, that is down 56th over to Old Town and the Old Town Station G-line. We're about a little over a half a mile, and so it's about a five-to-10-minute bike ride. It's about a 15-to-20-minute walk. There is a sidewalk on the north side of 56th that connects our site to the west, and there is also a RTD bus line number 72 that goes from Ward Road to Commerce City, makes 20 trips a day, Monday through Saturday. So you can see this site is pretty well-connected to transit. In conclusion, we just want to thank you for your consideration on this. This is an important and beneficial development for our city in providing much-needed affordable housing. Thank you.
Does that conclude your presentation? Thank you very much. I'll now open it up for public comment on this project. Understand that in taking this public comment, that again, as I said earlier, this isn't a time for us to get in a debate with you back and forth if you ask questions. This is the type of hearing where indeed we'll endeavor to get you answers to your questions. It's important that you direct your comments to the dais, not, don't be turning around and pointing fingers at the applicant, things of that nature. It's not, it's not how we do things in Arvada. We keep our public hearings very professional. It's, I think it's beneficial that everyone treats each other with respect in these matters. So with that, I will open it up for public comment. We have received some comment by emails that will be included into the record as well. Evelyn Anthony, you are first.
That's, I don't have public comments. Did you say Evelyn Anthony?
Yes, but you are against, you're against the issue.
Uh, what?
You're against the issue?
Yes.
Okay, and we'll make, we'll make a note of that for the record.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, Angela Resman.
Hi, my name's Angela Resman. I'm here today as a representative of the Jefferson Center for Mental Health, which is the community mental health service center servicing Jefferson, Gilpin, and Clear Creek Counties for over 60 years. I'd like to let the members of City Council know that we fully support this project for several reasons. Family Tree has a proven track record of providing services in our community and has been a trusted partner to Jefferson Center throughout the years and the work that we do to serve this community. We've all seen the stark increase in homelessness in our community over the past several years, and Family Tree's project will provide a solution for 85 of those unhoused individuals and families who are also our neighbors. Not only will this project provide much-needed affordable housing support, but it will also allow, follow an evidence-based approach to promote long-term housing stability in addition to easy access to much-needed services to the residents of Marshall Street Landing. Every human being deserves a safe place to call home, especially our most vulnerable neighbors, and that is exactly what Marshall Street Landing will provide for our community. The location of this project is also ideal, as it is close to the transit center, retail centers, restaurants, and other needed services. The building itself is beautifully designed and will add value and improvement to the existing neighborhood. The land being proposed for development can hold much denser housing than what it is currently in existence and will also serve more of our neighbors in need. It will provide a nice transition between some of the commercial spaces and the residences in the neighborhood. Further, the trauma-informed design principles used in this building will promote healing and wellness for residents of Marshall Street Landing. Jefferson Center is committed to providing additional support to residents through onsite mental health and substance use counseling services. Similar projects around the state have demonstrated that bringing permanent supportive housing into a neighborhood does not threaten safety for neighbors, nor does it increase traffic or parking congestion, which some people may fear may happen. Personally, I've worked as a community-based housing therapist for Jefferson Center for the past three years, and I've seen the increasing need for not only affordable, but for supportive housing options for people experiencing homelessness in this community. This is a current gap in our service continuum that I've personally seen in our community throughout my work in this role, and therefore, I'm pleased. And therefore, I'm pleased to offer my personal support as well as the support of Jefferson Center for this much needed and evidence-based housing development in Arvada.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Dr. Harriet Hall.
It's nice to be here tonight.
Good to see you.
I live on Grandview Avenue, just a couple of blocks from this property. I want to thank the Planning Commission for recommending approval of this project and I urge council to approve it. As I said, I live about two blocks from the site and we have had no issues with the homeless, low-income housing previously provided at this site. In fact, until I learned about this project, I was unaware that this was the current use of the project, of the property. I heard at the public meeting a year or so ago that people feared that it would bring increased homeless to the neighborhood. I have to disagree with this fear. The way for us to have less homelessness is by providing homeless and low-income individuals with affordable and accessible housing, not by keeping them out. I understand that at Planning Commission, there was concern about the focus on East Arvada for affordable housing. I will say that I do have to agree with this concern. We need more affordable housing in all of Arvada. That concern is not a reason, however, to turn down this worthy project. This is an excellent project. Family Tree is a high-quality nonprofit organization with strong leadership and excellent community partners working with them. I urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jeffrey Bruce. And Mr. Bruce, I assume you will not be contradicting Dr. Hall.
Yeah.
Well, you did indicate if you were for or against, but I was betting, if I'm a betting man. How are you, sir?
I'm alive still. Mayor, council members, I had to write this out because I promised not to go too way off, off the beam. There are many who profess to be religious humanitarian people until it affects them and then suddenly nimby, not in my backyard, is the cry. There are many who are willing to help others or who are willing to, for others to help people, but until it is themselves, then suddenly again, it is not in my backyard. On Grandview, there've been quite a few people, not many, who are against this project simply because it's going to affect them. As has already been said, I did not know that there was already such a facility operating. It hasn't affected us. The people from this development will not be walking necessarily on Grandview. And if they do, so what? They're part, they're one of the citizens. The professionalism of the outfits, the mental health and of the people who will be running the, the buildings themselves, absolutely professional. We didn't know it was there. There's no reason when you give permission for this to go through, and I'm pretty sure you will, because it's in everybody's interest not to have people hanging around the library all the time, not for people having to go get drugs and nobody helping to keep them on the straight and narrow. This is what this organization will do. It's there to help people on our behalf. It's not going to do anything for me, but it'll be doing some things for other people and therefore it will be doing something for me and you and everybody else. So I trust that you will let this come through. I would make one point though. I think the cities gave millions of dollars to Walmart and other organizations. I think maybe the city could put some money into this and make the exterior of the building all brick, a little bit more attractive. That would help us all. Anyway, I went right off the beam. I'll be in trouble. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce. Judy Douglas.
That's a hard act to follow. I want to talk in support of this project with Family Promise. I understand the concerns of the immediate community and I wish that there will be a time in the future when diverse housing can be in all parts of our city, including my neighborhood at 72nd and Kipling. But Family Promise owns this property and they've done a wonderful job of, of putting something together. On the positive side, there are many folks roaming around our community, especially in Old Town and the parks, who can't live independently at one point in their lives. The reasons are many, traumatic childhoods, PTSD, mental illness or misinformation that can cause a person to make very poor choices. When these people are dangerous, they're dealt with, with the justice system. But if they're just an eyesore or a nuisance in the community, they can be helped to learn how to be self-sustaining. Once a month, I do my churchly duty and serve soup to the homeless folk at Rising Church. The people I meet there have immense potential. Many are deeply religious, some have heartbreaking disabilities, some have lost their way in life and they just can't see a way or a means to get the way out. Supportive housing addresses these issues. People learn how to care for a living space. They learn how to live in community instead of isolation. They learn to care for each other. And we all know if we've raised children that the way to teach respect is to be respectful to others. Family Promise has a stellar reputation. I've been a volunteer for them for many years. This will be an attractive building and it will be maintained. The support services will be there. No one's life is going to improve if we just give them a free meal, a shelter during a cold night or a stay in jail for a couple of days. This project brings permanent solutions and it really will improve our community. Thanks.
Thank you very much. That's all the sign-up sheets I have. Do I have anybody on Zoom? Can I have, got one on Zoom?
Mindy Moore's on Zoom.
Mindy, I know you're out there somewhere.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can now, very good.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me now?
We can indeed.
Thank you. I, I can't really, our.
Yes. I can't really.
We got a huge delay going on. Mindy, if you can hear me, Phil, just go ahead and give your comments.
Okay, thank you. And I'll be very brief because I think the people who have spoken earlier have said it all very well. This is a very important development for our community. Permanent supportive housing is so necessary because as you've heard others say, if somebody's been chronically homeless, living in their car, living on the street for any period of time, putting them in an apartment alone is not often the answer. They are lonely, they have lost the ability to be or to remember how to be a good neighbor to others and it's very isolating. But having permanent supportive housing, having care onsite 24/7, the sense of community that was discussed, the trauma-informed design, I think are all wonderful assets that will help 85 households really thrive, help them to become more independent, you know, be employed if that's been an issue. And I, and I truly commend Family Tree and all of the partners for doing this as well as the city of Arvada. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address city council on this issue? Seeing that, I'll close the public comment portion. Ms. Simpson has reserved the motion. I'll open it up for questions. Ms. Faray, do you have any questions?
No, other than, I, I just had a comment that it was a great presentation about trauma-informed design, which is something we don't often see, so I appreciate them explaining that for us.
Very good. Mr. Jones?
My only comment or question actually was the purpose of the neighborhood meeting on 9/20. If there was already one community meeting and this is approved this evening, what's the purpose of the community meeting on the 20th?
Why don't you, why don't you direct, explain that a little bit?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Jones. You're, you're exactly right. This is not a required community meeting. We are holding another meeting because we, we know that there are concerns in the community and we don't want to invalidate our neighbors around this project. So we want to engage in a productive dialogue or what we hope will be a productive dialogue to, to truly hear their concerns and to work together to address those in a way that we hope will be mutually beneficial for, for everyone in, in the neighborhood. So, so we're doing this because we want to be good neighbors, we want to hear those concerns and we want to work together.
Very good.
Great, thank you.
Other comments from council prior to a motion? Mr. Marriott?
Yeah, I actually have a couple of questions. If Scott or the design team wants to come up, I would want to ask a couple of things. The first question I would have is, you know, this is living units as well as then some space for services. Do you have a rough breakdown on how much space for services we're talking about versus, we know that it's 85 units, but do you know how many square feet are dedicated to office space for service providers to, to use?
Yeah, so our amenity space, the interior amenity space is about 6,500 square feet. And so that space is intended to be offices, not only for the management of the building, but for the service providers and also creating spaces for informal interaction with the residents in that 6,500. I can't say necessarily that there's 1,200 square feet, you know, per whatever. It's, it's more of a, that whole space is going to, is intended to be used for interaction with service providers and residents.
Are, are there actually offices where service providers can set up the infrastructure they need and the files and the presence that they need?
Yeah, there absolutely is.
And how many of those are there?
There's three private office areas and then leasing areas as well. So there's probably, I, maybe Scott or Cassie's better at how many staff will be there, but there's probably a half a dozen.
Okay. And, and those are intended to be, to be occupied by a service provider, not just a, a room you can close the door and meet in if you want to, but, but where they can actually have a presence there? Am I correct about that?
Have a presence, but then also it's more, it's set up a little probably more flexible. Cassie, do you want to jump up and talk a little bit more about the program?
Yeah, so the, the design of our amenity space will include the private offices for staff to work and do the things, but also to create opportunities for those interactions. So we will have classrooms where we can conduct trainings and, and things like that. We will have a kitchen area where we can enjoy meals together with the folks that we're serving. We will have five staff members onsite, include a, plus an additional therapist onsite 24/7. So they'll need private spaces. But the goal is to really bring community together, bring our residents together, bring the case management with their team members and to have more natural conversations that often lead to better solutions than this, what I think sometimes feels like interrogation when you're trying to figure out what clients need. We're going to have spaces where we can just sit on a couch together and figure out what's going on and what the needs are of that household.
Okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Let me ask another question. We've seen recently, Foothills Housing has, has a, a, a new project here that is actually a beautiful project, looks great, deals with a rather tough population and so there have been some security issues there. And so do you guys have any, you wouldn't want to give details out because it is security, but have you, do you have a good plan for how you're going to have security within the building, not only security personnel, but also security technology to be able to, you know, to, to, to operate a facility like this?
So it's, it'll be a locked doors. So we have cameras at the doors, we have a locked courtyard, so people can't necessarily just come into the building whenever they want. And so we will have that and along with 24/7 presence, most apartment complexes, you're not going to see a 24/7 presence, but we, we will be there, there will always be somebody onsite. To also really work at, what I've seen doing this work, when people are having bad nights, bad days, sometimes they just need that person. We are going to have that person there. They can come down from their apartment, they could call us up and we're going to be there to help, help calm folks down, help meet them before situations get escalated. So our goal is to prevent situations as opposed to responding to them, along with having that 24/7 presence in case we have to.
Okay, but your 24/7 presence isn't, isn't 24/7 security presence?
No, there will not be a, a security guard 24/7.
No, okay, okay, got it. Okay, let me ask you another question, probably for the architect. I see on the plan that there are tandem carports. Can you tell me how that works? Do those both get assigned to a certain room? Is that how it works? Because obviously, somebody parks behind you, you're stuck.
Yeah, those are assigned for the two-bedroom apartments. So, and that's it.
Right, okay.
Only those, so it'll be kind of a management of the unit.
Is that common in these types of designs to have a tandem? That's, I, kind of the first time I've seen something like that.
Yeah, tandems, you know, typically you would assign them to two or three bedrooms, depending on the development. And it's just for that. It's very difficult to manage parking in general on a lot of these developments. So taking that kind of out of the management staff and putting it into the tenant or the unit kind of tenants, that's, that's a little better strategy.
Okay, good. Let me ask you another question while I have you up here. In, in part of the presentation, there was a talk of a, of a linear urban park, I think, along the Marshall Street frontage. Am I correct about that?
Small urban parks. Yep, so we'll have those on Marshall and on 56th.
So what's the difference between a small urban park and just required landscaping for a development like this? Is there something that's different about it or is it essentially the same thing?
No, it, it is different. And so the, the small urban park is a zoning requirement. And so what happens there is there's additional seating areas, there's lighting, there's additional plantings, there's art installations that can be there. So it, it's basically kind of an upgraded plaza, plaza-type situation where it's more welcoming to people to come, sit, you know, experience it rather than just kind of walking by.
So not necessarily landscaping with signs that say, "Keep off," but this is a park, come on in, right?
Pretty much, yeah.
All right, sounds good. Let me ask you another question. And this may be more relevant for the hearing to come on the right-of-way vacation, but I'm going to ask it now because we're kind of looking at the overall project. Looks like the neighbor to the south has some access to the west side of their property here. Will, and, and it, from the narrative, it looks like they will get to continue access in the west side of their property just through the driveway on, on this property. Will that be gated or locked or, or has that, has that property owner decided what he wants and you're fulfilling their wishes or how, how is that going to work?
Yeah, it's funny you mention that. We just had a conversation a week ago and there's concern about whether to add a gate or not. Adding a gate kind of presents its own challenges. It's a, it would be a very large gate and what we have designed currently is open access. So there's no restrictions, nobody, you know, locks it when it's not supposed to be locked or however that is. So that's how it, how it's designed now, is open access.
And have you communicated with that property owner to see what their wishes are?
Yeah, that's the conversation I said. We, we had a conversation last week about this very topic.
And that's what that property owner wants? They just want it open so they can come and go as they like?
Yep, and that's what we've been talking about, whether we close it or open it. And I think there's still a little discussion to be had.
Okay. Well, let's just make sure that that property owner gets satisfied, that they don't lose access as a, as, as a consequence of this, whether it's, it becomes gated and they don't want it to be or whether they want it gated and it doesn't be or, you know, whatever, however, let's just make sure they're, they're good. Another question, you have, from looking at the, the drawings, it doesn't look like there's much articulation along 56th Avenue, but the rendering seemed to show that. there's much articulation along 56th Avenue, but the renderings seem to show that. Which of, which of, which of those is it?
Well, there's, so we've got a lot, on, on 56th Avenue, we have a lot of projections and recesses along 56th. And so, and we also have a variety of building materials, so we have stucco and the lap siding. So, there's a differentiation of materials, the scale of those materials, and the projections, and also kind of the roof line.
And does a projection mean that the building actually bumps out or bumps in along there?
Correct.
So, the one that just shows a straight line across there is for a different purpose or doesn't show what that really is?
That's kind of, that's the first floor base, and then, so up above that first floor, on the second floor through the fourth floor is where the, the ins and outs go.
Okay, got, okay, got it. Last thing, and I want to maybe start this with our team. You know, one of the things we're considering tonight is, is the major modification to not have balconies. And it seems like we've seen this now a couple of times in similar projects to this. Have we had requests for removal of balconies on other projects that are not subsidized housing, or can, can you tell us a little bit about where the balcony versus no balcony thing stands? Because it seems like that's been the request lately.
Yeah, we've seen it more on these affordable projects, just because there is a cost associated with it, and, and in this instance, the trauma-informed design. But, on market rate projects, we have not had requests to remove balconies. In that instance, I think they see that more as an amenity here. They've got other considerations with the affordable projects.
Right, okay. Do we have any fear that we're building stuff that will be readily identifiable as you drive by as a certain thing by, by doing that, by having only some projects be much different than all the others?
I, I know our hope has been with the articulation that we're getting on these buildings and the, the variety of materials, that hopefully that still gives it a quality look and feel where it wouldn't be differentiated.
Okay. Do you have any comment on that? Not, not something you're worried about, that these will be readily identifiable?
I think the, the quality of materials, as Rob was suggesting, I think that's important. I think the masonry is important. That's a rich, you know, stable kind of quality material. And, and there'll be, you know, there's architectural kind of articulation on the ground plane as well as up above, so I, there's, I don't think you're going to be able to drive by it and say, "That's affordable housing."
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Thank you, I appreciate it. It's all my questions.
Yep, thanks.
Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. I have quite a few questions myself before I make the motion. So, and to Mr. Marriott's point about balconies, we do have some attainable projects that we've built that have balconies in the design, so I don't think it's going to be a full bellwether of it is or it isn't. So, in terms of questions, I wanted to start, let's see here. So, we mentioned the 24/7 caseworkers. Is there going to be essentially one person onsite at all times or up to two?
Through scheduling, we'll have up to two people at all times, and possibly more if need be.
Okay, great, thank you. And the doors locked from the exterior, so people can't just come and go, they have to have a badge?
Yep, they have to have security badges, and there'll be cameras on the front door, so we'll be able to see who's out there.
Okay, great. The garden perimeter fence, is it six feet?
Yep.
Perfect. All right. And then...
Call a friend.
Phone a friend on that one.
In terms of the services provided, so as you noted, a significant population will have a disability, some will be addiction treatment, and others will be mental health treatment, often which require medicines. So, will the caseworkers be there to help administer medicines for those who are not able to perhaps, or reliable enough to take them themselves?
Yeah, so our goal is to not be the person that is doing everything for folks. Part of Family Tree's impact strategy is help people get connected to the community resources that are going to be able to come in and do that. There are nurse practitioners, we, most of our clients will have some kind of Medicaid or health insurance that those will be able to provide for home health visitation to come in and do that. Our role as case managers will be to work with our clients to get them connected to the appropriate resources that are going to help that person thrive the most. Our case managers can't be the end-all, be-all for everything, but we can connect the people to everybody that needs to do that for them.
Excellent, thank you. And then, how are referrals to this unit made? I imagine you can't just walk in and apply?
No, that would be awesome. We actually have several referral sources because of the unique voucher situation that we'll have coming from different places, including Division of Housing and Foothills Regional Housing Authority. We will be working with our coordinated entry system, so that is short version, sort of a one-stop place where people can apply for supportive housing when they're experiencing homelessness, they don't have to get on 15, 20 different wait lists, you get on one, and so we'll be able to pull folks. We're also partnering with all of our regional, our, the regional homeless coordinators through Jefferson County, including Arvada, who will be able to make direct referrals to this program. So, we're going to be able to house our folks here in Arvada.
That's awesome. That actually leads nicely into my next question. I had a question about people who might be utilizing inpatient treatment somewhere, either mental health or addiction inpatient treatment. Obviously, they're most at risk of falling off the second they leave the inpatient. Will we be coordinating with those facilities to be like, "There's an apartment here," and transfer them so that they're not really, like, put out on the front step?
Yeah, so that's sort of a difficult question. The way that some of these vouchers are funded, they have to have experienced homelessness prior to going into that situation, so that gets a little wonky. But, if these are folks that have been connected with our services, we're going to be able to support them and, and working through getting connected if that needs to be. There are also a lot of other resources in our community that's worked directly with people who are coming out of institutions like that, and Family Tree has a lot of resources and are able to connect people to those as well. So, it may not be here, but Family Tree definitely works along with Jefferson Center to get people connected to that.
Excellent, thank you. And then, just in terms of like, lifestyle for here, so you've mentioned all these amazing things you're doing onsite. Will there be opportunities for group excursions, people to, to, I don't know, all go to the theater together or something?
Yeah, I think sky's the limit on this, right? Like, we're going to have community members who are going to really be designing the, what it looks like for them to thrive. We're going to be working with folks, if, if that's what it is, that our community wants to get together and, and go out, our case managers and our team are going to be able to help coordinate that.
Great. And then, when they're stabilized, when they've, you know, got their job, reconnected with family, and frankly, exceeding the income limits, what, what happens next?
I mean, our goal, if someone is thriving in that space, that our case managers are working on exit strategies for them, that they're exiting to a place that they're going to be able to likely to afford and be able to thrive on their own. So, we don't just say, "Oh, you passed the income, peace out." We're here to, like, we're here for follow-up, we're still here, we're not going anywhere. People can call and connect with us, and, but before they go, we're going to put some really great strategies in place. And going back to the, my comments around connecting people with those community resources, so when they leave Family Tree, if they're, if they're in our project and we're the ones administering their medications, when they leave, we're not going with them. But, you know who is? That nurse coordinator that we connected them with. So, all of those resources that we've helped to get connected to are community-based, and they're going to follow them.
Excellent, thank you. All right, I think those are, those are my questions.
Good. Mr. Mormons, good.
I don't actually have questions, I wanted to reserve for comment after the motion's made.
Okay, very good.
Perfect, all right.
Go ahead, Ms. Simpson.
Let me get to my comment. All right. I move that the conditional use for residential development in the MXS zoning district for the Family Tree Affordable Housing, a 1.71 acre parcel of land approximately located at 5549 Marshall Street in the city of Arvada be approved. And I'm going to make a comment on this. So, I want to say thank you particularly to Family Tree for bringing this project forward. It's difficult for me, but my father suffered from mental health issues, and he lived homeless for three years when I was a teenager. It was people, like the people at Family Tree, who saved his life and got him home. It's why I know some of these questions about stability and who delivers medicines, it's because I've had to organize that as a family member with no expertise. If there had been a facility like this for my father, it could have saved a lot of trauma for my own family. So, these kinds of resources being available in our community, not just for these individuals, but for their extended families, that will have a tremendous benefit for all of us, I think. So, I want to thank them for bringing this forward. I want to thank all of you for coming out here tonight, because I know that this is a hard issue, and it's one that the community can be really concerned about. We all care about our neighborhoods, I know we do. And Southeast Arvada, believe me, I, I'm right there with you, so I know how you feel about sometimes you may be the forgotten part of town. I assure you, you are not, and this is something we're going to do with great care and intention. And looking forward, we need to be investing more resources in you guys to get you guys the kind of community that you believe you deserve and that I know you deserve. So, thank you.
Mr. Mormon?
Thank you. Thank you, Family Tree, for bringing this project to Arvada. It's something we really need, and I'm, I'm very impressed with the description of your programs that you will be offering, the supportive housing is, is so integral to getting folks to, to be independent, and, and that, again, is something we know many individuals in Arvada need specifically, so I'm, I'm really appreciative of that. I did want to make a comment about the, the balconies. We had a project before us recently in which I opposed the modification for eliminating balconies. I felt that really set up a, an inequity between those that have the means to buy a place that has a balcony and those that don't. I will be supporting the modification today because I really appreciate the explanation you have given that we did not receive on that prior project. There's a very strong intention that I see here with the trauma-informed design that goes into the project, getting more light into the apartment and, and all that is, is in this project, that I see that that, it makes sense to me today where it did not make sense to me on that project, so I will be supporting that modification. Thank you.
Very good. You've spoken to the next motion, so you're, you're ahead of the game. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I will also be supporting this when we look at the action before us here, the conditional use. I do believe the applicant has met all of the criteria, and this project complies with everything to make that worthwhile. And I also believe this is a really good use of the spot, and I have absolutely no qualms that this organization will do just a fantastic job with their mission. And like Mr. Mormon, I'm going to go ahead and speak to the next motion so I don't have, so I, so I won't interrupt...
Don't want me to just make it?
After the second motion is made, but with, with regard to balconies, I think it's an interesting question. You know, I might suggest that over time, we may look at our land development code in general, particularly that provision in land, in our land development code. I do have some concerns that we, you know, we, the things we build today are going to be around for a really, really, really long time. And while I understand this project has unique needs for space allocation inside based on the mission that they have, I think the, the concern about making these places readily identifiable as you drive by, I think is real. And I think the, the people who, who will go on to live in these, obviously, if you're the, you know, the, the, if you've accomplished getting one of these places, you certainly are not going to complain about anything. So, you're not going to ever get any pressure from the residents of it that, that they're being treated differently than the rest. But, I think it's up to us to think about that, to think about those questions long term, and so, I, I, in this particular case, I'm going to vote for the major modification. However, I do want to just make sure that my concerns are out there, that we know that, you know, as we go forward in the future, that this type of development, which will become more common, that the people who live there shouldn't be living in any different conditions than anybody else in the city, regardless of how they pay their rent, or who's paying their rent, or what their rent is, and that we should aspire to have development that 50 years from now, or 100 years from now or more, will be undiscernible from the stuff around it. So, those are my comments, and with that, I'll certainly be voting yes on both of these.
Ms. Ferrey, did you wish to speak to the motion?
No, I think my fellow councilmembers have covered it all. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, same for me. I just want to, again, thank Family Tree for the efforts that they've, and the impacts that they make in the, in the community. And, you know, I, my sense is, is that they're going to deliver this particular format as well as they do others, so I obviously will be voting yes.
Very good. I'll be supporting the motion. Frankly, the fact that it's Family Tree makes this very easy. You've got a great track record, you do good projects, and you've been in the community for years and years and years. So, you're not some fly-by-night that's coming in here and saying, "We're going to do great things." You, you back it up with what you do. So, with that, I will also be supporting the motion. So, with that, Ms. Ferrey, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
The rest of council has voted yes as well. That passes six to zero with Mr., Mr. Pfeiffer being an excuse. I, I thought this was Mr. Pfeiffer sitting down here, with the abundance of good questions. So, with that, you may make your second motion.
All right. I move that the major modification from the land development code subsection 5-1-2-5G multifamily residential buildings shall provide at least 75% of the total dwelling units with at least one private outdoor yard patio or balcony, a 1.7 acre parcel of land approximately located at 5549 Marshall Street in the city of Arvada, Colorado be approved. This motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the planning commission. And I will make my little comment on motion number two now, is simply that this is a great design, it's very trauma-informed, it's not just about aesthetics, this is a very important thing, and so I think excellent work, and especially with the central courtyard space. So, great work binding that amenity for our residents.
Very good. Ms. Ferrey, do you wish to speak to the motion?
No.
Mr. Jones?
No, thank you.
And we've heard Mr. Mormons and Mr. Marriott's comments. I'll join in those comments, and particularly Mr. Marriott's, in terms of, we don't want certain projects to be known as the projects, and so it's very important that we have high design standards. I think you've certainly met them on this. With that, Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ferrey?
Yes.
Rest of council votes yes as well. That passes six to zero with Mr. Pfeiffer being an excused absence. Thank you. Congratulations, move forward. We're looking forward to seeing this project come out of the ground. Now, open the public hearing on Council Bill 2302-1, an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 102 Utilities of the Arvada City Code pertaining to system development charges. And Sharon Israel is going to present this one tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The ordinance before the city council will adjust water and sewer system development charges previously adopted in October 2022. The effective date of the new SDCs will be October 1st, 2023, as approved by City Council Resolution R 23-054. The updated water system development charge for a single-family home is proposed to be decreased from $38,600 to $34,490. The updated sewer system development charge for a single-family home is proposed to be decreased from $10,400 to $6,240. The sewer system development charge is in addition to a fee charged by Metro Water Recovery for new connections. The current Metro Water Recovery fee for 2023 for a single-family home is $5,120. All of the system development charges and financial impacts, including changes, are included in the ordinance, and the Arvada team represents, recommends that the city council approve CB 23-021, an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 102 Utilities of the Arvada City Code pertaining to system development charges.
Very good. Open up for public comment. Anyone wish to testify on this? Mr. Radbury, you don't have anything you want to enlighten us with tonight? That's, that, that's a good sign. Thank you. I'll close the public comment portions. Open up for city council questions or action. Mr. Marriott, you barely beat Ms. Simpson to the button.
Happy, happy to defer to Ms. Simpson if she would like.
Absolutely, no, I've already had my turn. You go ahead.
With that, I'll move that CB 23-021, an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 102 Utilities of the Arvada City Code pertaining to system development charges be approved on final reading, numbered 4854, and ordered published by title only. And I will make a comment. You know, I think the, these are difficult things to do, to set system development charges. We, I believe we probably neglected doing this for a while, which has led to some sticker shock here with our actions. I want to acknowledge and appreciate the development community's input on this and, and frankly, pushing us to get this right. I believe we have here, and so with that, I'll certainly be voting yes.
Very good. Mr. Jones, any comments, or do you wish to vote?
Um, I'll just make a, a quick comment as well. Uh, piggybacking off of Mr. Marriott in the sense that I, I, I'm glad that we paused for just a little bit so that we could get the, the appropriate feedback from the development community, um, because I hope now that the work that's been done by our team, which has been a lot, um, can be sustained and, uh, put us on a good trajectory for, for many years to come. So I, again, appreciate the development community. I really appreciate the team, um, for, uh, digging in, uh, deep to, to truly get us on, on the right path. So with that, I'll be voting yes.
Thank you. Ms. Faray?
I'll also be voting yes.
Thank you. With that, all votes cast. That passes six to zero with, um, Mr. Pfeiffer being an excused absence. Does anybody wish to address the council in the additional section of public comment at this time? Seeing none, I'll close that public comment portion. Reports from city council. Mr. Marriott.
And thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to, um, to acknowledge all the work, um, this past weekend that our citizens and volunteers and organizations put, put in, uh, to create, what a busy weekend. Um, you know, in addition, we had the Harvest Festival Parade, which I thought was done exceptionally well, and they certainly had a big group of volunteers that could not have been nicer and did a great job putting that on. Of course, the Harvest Festival in its, I believe, 98th year, 98th edition, uh, was done and, uh, done well. Um, the Old Town Bid did a very good job with an arts, uh, festival, and of course, the Archtop Music Festival, which is just an absolute gem. I, I think if it were more widely publicized, there would not be enough parking for miles around for people to come see those. Um, but in addition to that, there was more. Uh, I want to particularly acknowledge the Mormon Church here in town who did their big public project this weekend as well. Um, and, uh, you know, it's things like these that our volunteers do, our organizations do, that really enrich the fabric of this community. Um, and just wanted to say thank you to everybody. I know I had a great weekend, and I'm still a little bit full of cherry pie from the pie-eating contest, so thank you all very much for what you did.
Ms. Simpson?
Uh, thank you. I echo Mr. Marriott's comments. Uh, I was also at that cherry pie-eating contest. I'm very happy to say I came in last. Um, that, it was a fantastic weekend. Com- commendation to everyone who worked on those. I went to both festivals, and both were extremely well-done. I enjoyed it a lot. I also want to commend the Arvada Center for the Arts and Humanities. They debuted their fall musical, Beautiful, the Carole King musical, and it's getting absolutely rave reviews. So if you're a Carole King fan or a musical theater fan, make sure to go get your tickets. It's supposed to be really good.
Yes, I, uh, Ms. Faray, did you have anything during public, during comment?
Just wanted to thank everyone in the city for being accommodating during my maternity leave, so I look forward to being in the chamber soon.
Well, we, we want to commend you for, you could, you could have just said, "I'm on maternity leave," and sort of checked out for a while, but you've certainly not done that, and so we appreciate you staying engaged and, and being part of these meetings even remotely, so, thank you. Mr. Jones?
I just didn't want Ms. Faray to feel left out, so I decided to go virtual as well.
That's very, very good of you. I could make, I could make some reference to your stomach size and say that we, we were going to ask you when you're due, but, uh-
Well, it's, it's, you know, that's, that's a whole nother thing, so.
Yeah. Uh, I'll, I'll echo Ms. Simpson. Uh, Lou and I had the privilege of going to opening night of, um, of Beautiful, and it brought back memories of me with my record player playing the Tapestry album over and over and over. Uh, it was an excellent show, phenomenal production, um, a, a great, great, great event. So, uh, with that, Ms. Gillis, do you have anything for us?
No, I do not.
Very good. Ms. Morris?
Nothing for me, Your Honor.
Very good. Yeah, I'll ma- I'll make one final comment. You know, I know that the, um, project that came before us from Family Tree had a lot of people show up for the, um, for the planning commission hearing, and that's frankly the value of having a planning commission, is that it allows our citizens to, to, to really address some of the rumors and, and misconceptions about projects, and the fact that we did, you know, we had one individual here tonight who was in opposition but chose not to speak, uh, and otherwise just a, a strong show of support for this project, and so that really shows the value of what our city team does in terms of, um, getting information to our citizens, having effective planning commission hearings, uh, before matters come to city council. We stand adjourned.